Schools to order for our special session for VSBA presentation. The time is 6:00 PM on May 12, 2015. Would you please rise to the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Our first and only item is a VSBA presentation and Peter from the VSBA will now, if you'll come to the podium and lead us through this.
Good evening, everybody. Should have us out here by 10, 11.
I hope so.
It's your drive to Virginia Beach, though. Well, thank you all for having me here this evening. Gina Patterson had a, one of our VSBA Blue Ridge Region meetings this evening and was previously scheduled for that. Otherwise, she would have been here with me. She and I do conduct the searches together, so even though she's not here this evening, you can be assured that she is a major part and the primary lead for the, for the search process. There are some materials that I put in front of you that I just wanted to kind of mention what a few of those are. The first is my business card, of course. If you did have any questions, you could utilize that or assuming most of you get my daily news every day, you could just hit reply and email me back that way.
Great stuff.
Excellent. The, the second is a, just a brief profile summary of the superintendent's search services and it has the, the different tasks that are involved and that's what I'm going to go through with you this evening to talk a little bit about what those, what those steps are. You'll also notice on the left-hand side that there are some information about VSBA experience and benefits of utilizing the VSBA to conduct the superintendent's search. The first benefit is that we are your association. We are not a, a search firm. We only do searches for superintendents in Virginia. VSBA has been conducting searches for more than 40 years and has been responsible for the placement of around 74 of the 132 sitting superintendents in Virginia. Gina was involved in the placement of all of those individuals. So in terms of finding somebody who has more experience in Virginia superintendent searches, you won't find any beyond our executive director. We are a member of the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, which is basically a national affiliation that's coordinated with the National School Boards Association. And what that is, it's a collection of all of the state association staff that do superintendent searches. And the benefit to that is, and comes in a variety of ways. First, when we are conducting the search, when we put out the position announcements, it's pushed out through all of those NASS affiliate school board associations. So truly gets out there nationally. In addition, there's a component of the search process that I'll talk a little bit about where we are doing reference checks on the candidates who have applied for the superintendency. The great thing is that we have a national network of other school boards associations that have more direct input and contact and feedback on candidates that are coming from out of state in far more depth than we could get if we were just calling traditional references. So that network provides a lot of benefits for us in both on the front end of getting applicants, but then later on when we are trying to find out more information to find out if they're the best fit for the county. We also have been working with, with school board associations as what we do as a, as a function are Director of Legal and Policy Services Elizabeth Ewing and our staff attorney, Kate Kaminsky, are, do assist us with the search should there be any legal questions that come up. So in terms of the, the overarching function of the association, this is wrapped into all those, those services that you've grown to, grown to expect. So I just wanted to point out just a few of those highlights there. There's also a stapled packet and what this is, is this is, and this is a more detailed brochure. And this talks a little bit about the, the association overview, experience and benefits. There's a fairly comprehensive list of recent searches as well as references. It'll go into more detail about those, those seven tasks and those seven steps. Has some sample timelines, the, the search team, and then the fee structure is on the, the last page as well. This is for you to, to take and you can read at your leisure because it really will just be a, a backup piece of your, if you recall that I went through something and you're like, well, what did he say was, was task three and what we're doing in that step? That way you have it here as a, as a takeaway. The final is the superintendent's search manual and I will be collecting this from you all prior to my departure today. This is what we provide all of the members of the school boards that we work with on superintendent searches. So we currently have 10 searches going on right now in Virginia that we are working on and each member has one of these, these search manuals. And we will go into, into a little bit more detail with that just in a, in a few more minutes when I start going through the, the steps and the, the process. So what I'd like to, to do is start with the first task and you'll find my PowerPoint is very basic. It's basically the seven steps with a little arrow next to it, so it's not, not a lot of, not a lot of text, a lot of conversation. What will, what typically will happen is we will meet with the board. Once the, if the board selects the school VSBA to work with you to conduct the superintendent's search, the board will, will meet with the VSBA to look at the timeline and to look at what this whole process is going to, going to look like for you. And some of the things that we'll talk about at that point will be distribution of the search procedures manual and we'll go, we would go through that in greater detail than I will this evening to let you know all of the resources and information that are available in there. We will also talk about ways to involve your community and your stakeholders. We typically recommend that that is through community surveys and community forums. We actually set up the, the online community survey for you and provide you with an announcement, press release announcing the beginning of the search that has that link integrated into it. So you could get that survey out immediately after that first meeting. One of the, the important things to remember when conducting a superintendent's search is that it's very important to get that community feedback on what characteristics and qualities that they're looking for in the next superintendent, but the ultimate decision does come down to the board because it is your responsibility to find that superintendent who is the best fit for the board, for the school division and for the community as a whole. And the, what we found is that the survey and a series, and depending on, on what you all decide, we have some school boards that have done two community forums, some have done three, some have done four that invites people to come in. What that's doing is that's letting you know what characteristics are important to your different stakeholder groups. And I'll give you a few examples and the reason that this is important is that one of those initial steps that you're going to do and actually that second task is developing the profile of the new superintendent. And what that is, is that's the position announcement that you're putting out nationwide, letting people know what you're looking for in the next superintendent for Montgomery County. So there are things like if you are looking for somebody that where experience as a principal is required, you can list that. If, if an earned doctorate is required, you could list that. Now I say required because there's another term and this, and these two terms are what the initial steps really hone in on, required versus preferred. Because the more specific you get, the narrower that pool becomes. Because if you say, if you're, you know, if you do this, do the community surveys and you find that, you know, 30% of the, those that responded say a principal experience is required. So not the majority, but you as a board say, you know, we're going to, we're going to put that as a requirement. It is going to impact those people that are qualified for your position. So we'll talk with you a lot about the, those two words, required versus preferred. A very common one that comes up in discussion is whether or not residency is required in the community. For the vast majority of school divisions, it is, but that is a, a decision that you will have to, you will have to come to. And so that's where the, with the initial meeting with the board, we talk a lot about that, that type of thing and that type of information and get that community survey out. So at that first meeting, it's, the search starts and we, at that point, try to target the community forum dates for you all to have, should you decide to have the community forums, figure out where the location, the times are, get those out to the press along with the survey as soon as possible after that first meeting because we want to keep that process moving along. Now fortunately, you all have, have a good amount of time. Dr. Blackburn is leaving effective October 1, 2015, so you actually have 180 days from then to announce your new superintendent. That does not mean that the individual has to start within that 180 days, but you have to make the announcement within that 180 days. So the fact that you all are already looking at the process, looking at what your options are, it's, you have ample, ample time.
Just a point of clarification with that, I said this to Gina too. Our preference would be to have someone in place by then, so we don't have to go through two transitions.
That's right.
So just as you're talking through this, just keep that in mind. That would be our hope.
Absolutely, absolutely. So in terms of the, the establishing the, the profile, there are a few examples in the search manual and we will guide you through that process when we get, when we get to that point, should you select the VSBA. With the advertising of the position, I can tell you that this is truly, once that position announcement is completed, that gets distributed nationwide and it truly is a nationwide search. And as a, as a prime example, we are working with Hampton City School Board and there were a total of 49 completed applications for that from 20 different states across the country. So it's, it's a national search and that's because we're working with that NASS group, the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searches. We also have a very large distribution list of people who have contacted us who are interested in becoming a superintendent in Virginia. And occasionally, some of those could be assistant or deputy superintendents in the state, it could be other folks from outside of the state as well. We also advertise on education, on the Education Week website, which feeds out to a lot of different, you know, as you know, everything on the internet is connected now, so if you're listed one, people will find it there. What we utilize for the applications is an online system called AppleTrack, which is actually the most popular app, online application system that's used by K-12 educational institutions in the country. And so that, we selected AppleTrack by talking with our fellow NASS members on what online application system they found has worked best with their boards. And so what the, what the application system does is it allows applicants to view the position announcement and then to start their application right there. And they don't have to, the, the previous method that, that was used was the, the classic, you know, paper set of post office, post office box, they mailed it in and whatnot. With this, there's the more flexibility for them to fine tune their, their application to take time to make sure it's as accurate as can be and then submit it to you. Each board member receives their own username and password from me so that you can access all of the candidate information the entire time. Unlike some groups which will, when conducting a search, might say, hey, you had 40 applications, here are the eight that we think you should consider. If you get 40 applications, you see all 40. And so, because we don't want to replace the board's judgment with ours, because we're going to go through and find out background information on all of those candidates and report that to you in our second meeting with the board, but we want it to be a completely open process for you so that you have access to that. Yes, sir?
Do you screen them for the requirements before you send them to us or is that our job?
So what, what happened, that's a great question. What happens is as the applicants apply, you'll get an automated email that will say you've received a new application. What we do is we look at the, at the applications and the applicants and we start conducting reference checks and reviewing their, their applications. And what we'll do in that second meeting is let you know which candidates meet most, if not all, of the stated qualifications. So what we always recommend is prior to that second meeting, we do ask that all the board members at least review the applications, have a good idea of who, who they're thinking is, is kind of rising to the top. And then what we can do is go through and we will say to you applicant number 74, 96, 103, so on, meet most, if not all, of the qualifications. And if they don't, why? Oftentimes at that meeting, there might be a candidate where a board member says, well, you know, I really liked the application packet of this person. Is there a reason that they weren't, that, what, what didn't, did they not meet? And that's where we would go through on that, on that second meeting. So the AppleTrack system is, is excellent for that purpose, so if they do upload app, reference letters, you can actually read those reference letters and look at them there. What that system does is it enhances confidentiality of the process because that confidentiality is key in order for us to get very good qualified candidates to apply. You know, you are in a, in a nice spot, a nice part of the state, there's a good reputation, successful school division, you're going to have people who want to come here. And oftentimes, especially if they're a, a sitting superintendent, they're very cautious and very concerned about that confidentiality. And very often what you'll see is a lot of applications will come in, in the last two days of that window because what they want to do is have their information out there for as short of a period as possible.
What is that window between advertising and your second meeting?
Great question. So once we advertise, we like to give four full weeks, four complete weeks for the, the position to, to be open for people to advertise. And from the, and what I'll do is when we go through, after I complete this, I'll point out a sample timeline that's in this document and then we can talk a little bit more about the, the specific timeline if that works.
I have a follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
When the school system hires someone, the person they hire has to have the requirements that are stated in the advertisement? It sounds to me that that's not necessarily true with superintendents. Or is, is it true and do we find five or six applicants we like but don't meet our requirements? Do we have to change the ad? How does that work?
Good question. That's where, where you want to be cautious with whether you're saying one of the requirements that you're looking for is required or preferred. So if, if you do say, you know, say you, you do a community survey and the majority of people say that, that a, an earned doctor is required and the board says, you know what, we, we all agree with that, you know, we want to put that in. And then you get somebody that applies that maybe their, their doctorate, you know, they're not complete with it, it'll be done in six months or 12 months. The, the issue really does come down to public accountability at that point. And, and so we really recommend, and that's why at the front end, it's very important to be very sure about those qualifications that get put together because it, it ultimately comes down to public perception on whether or not you're following, following those As I mentioned before, you know, we will do this initial screening of the, of the candidates and that's, once we have the, the screening completed, we'll have the second meeting with the board. Once the, the applications close, we typically like approximately a two-week timeframe to finalize any of the, any of the reference checks that we're working on. We typically will work on those along the, along the process, but we do like to have that, that two-week, two-week window. And that's where we'll, we'll come back to you, go through the, those that meet most, if not all, answer any particular questions that you might have about, about a candidate. You know, one, one good example is, you know, one school division was looking for somebody who had particular experience with technology because they were really wanting to move forward on their one-to-one programs because they'd had some, some stumbling blocks along the way. And so they were looking for an individual who had experience doing that. And so when we are reviewing information and talking to, to, to references, we're asking particularly about those specific areas that are of interest to you. So, okay. Then what we, what happens at that point is after we meet with you all, we, that's when we start talking a little bit about the, the interview process. And the, with the interview process, what we typically have found is that most boards operate on a, basically a, a three-interview process. And, and the, the first round of interviews, you know, so, so we have the, the first or the second meeting with you, we review the candidates and you all determine, let's pick the number out of the air, that these seven candidates look interesting to you. And you decide, we want to bring these, these folks in for that first round of interviews. And what we will do is work with you, talking a little bit about, about the interview process. We include in the, the search procedures manual, which I'll show you in a moment, category specific questions to help, help kind of spur on some, some suggestions, suggested questions that you may want to cover. That first round of interviews, we always recommend that the interview questions are consistent from candidate to candidate and that you very carefully document your perception of, of how they did in answering those questions. So we have several interview organizers that we also include in the search manual to help with that. If any of you have ever conducted interviews or gone through that type of process, it's very easy to remember the first one and the last one, but a lot of times those in between can just start to blend together. And it's a very, and it's a very intense process. I will, for those who have not gone through a, a search process, it is an intense process because it's an important decision for your community and, and people feel that pressure. So it's really important that, that you keep that information together and keep your notes together because what, what happens is on that second round of interviews, so say out of the seven, you decide we want to bring back three. We want to talk with them a little bit more. I almost think of the first round as a first date and then, you know, do you really, do you want to go out with them again? You know? And so the, the second round is, yeah, you know, we had coffee, it went well, now I want to, let's go out to dinner. You know, let's have, have a more in-depth conversation. And that second round of, of interviews is where you can get into a little bit more in-depth with that individual. So I'll use that example of the, the technology integration and the one-to-one. One of the candidates may have talked a little bit about their integration and the experience they had perhaps with having inadequate infrastructure to support the one-to-one initiative in the classroom. And so you could during that second round of interviews, ask them specifically about that and say, you know, we have in our notes from your, your first interview that, that you talked a little bit about, about this, could you tell us a little bit more about that? Or you may have had one that talked about having to work with school construction or renovation and you could say, we want to hear a little bit more, more about that. And it allows you to really learn in detail about, about them. We did have a, a school division, a, a school board that's, and several have done, done something similar, but a school board found that they had, they had it down to where there were two excellent candidates that they were looking at and they weren't really sure which direction they wanted to go. So they invited those candidates back and they gave them a scenario. And they asked them to look at this scenario for 45 minutes and come back and do the, give them a report. And they found that that was a very interesting way just to see how people think. It's, it's not necessarily to say one did poorly and one did better, just how do they process and how do they organize information and how do they present to the board? And then very often the, the third round is when you're getting to, to where you have that, have that finalist and you're in the final negotiations and you want to invite them back to the, back into town. And that's typically a, more of a low-key dinner function. If they have a spouse, invite them to, to bring the spouse in. It's just a way in a, in a low-pressure situation to get to, get to know, get to know that individual. Once the, once you get to the point that you have that individual selected and you're, you're working on, on your contract and your contract negotiations, we do have a, a sample contract that we include in the search manual that is very board-friendly. And there are particular areas in there that are underlined that are, we always recommend people pay very close attention to. But once we get to, to that point and you're working on the contract, the Director of Legal and Policy Services for VSBA, Elizabeth Ewing, will review the contract for you. Now, this is often done with your school board. You know, many, many boards say, well, we have our attorney, we're working with so-and-so, they're going to work with us, but if you wanted to have Elizabeth look at that, that's perfectly fine because she looks at a great many of these, considering that she looks at them for all the searches for us. Also, when it gets to the time of announcement, we'll work with you and I will develop a press release either for you or along with communication staff on a press release announcing who your new superintendent is. And then after the individual is announced and is working with the division, at that point, we would invite you to come to Charlottesville for board development and training with that superintendent. It's a great opportunity to set some goals, create open communication, get to, get to really know one another and hash out and clarify those board roles and responsibilities. And it's always a great opportunity with the, with that first, first few months, first six months with a, with a new individual. I would like to, to take a moment just to point out a few things, as I mentioned, from the, from the, the paperclip doc, the paperclip document here. If you go to page nine, that has the sample timeline that I referenced earlier. And this is just an example. So it basically operates from that first meeting with the VSBA and, and the board. And so that's where we have the initial meeting, there's the official announcement. Usually within two to three weeks from that date is when we have the deadline for the, the surveys or the public hearings to take place. We find with surveys, if you give folks more than two weeks, at that point, the, the rate of return diminishes to the point where it's really not worth extending it out past that. Part of that schedule really does though depend on the number of community forums that you'd like to have, locations that you'd like to have them, and of course, board member schedules. Once we have that information collected and you all have had the community forums, we take all of the survey results, and that reminds me of one thing. With the survey, in most communities, there's a fairly sizable population of folks who do not have high-speed internet access, so, or don't like to use a computer or don't use a computer. So what we do recommend is having paper copies of the survey available in the community as well. And that, those can be at all of the, the schools along with a collection envelope, any, any way that we can distribute those and then have those collected at the same location. Those can be sent to the VSBA and we will input those into the electronic survey. So that way the final report that we send to you has all of the electronic and the paper surveys in one document. And so you will have a, a report that gives you information on particular characteristics such as what percentage of the community wants residency, what percentage wants a doctorate, what percentage wants classroom teaching, principal experience and so on. And then with personal characteristics, are they looking for somebody who's team-oriented, a communicator, active in the community, good public relations skills, strong with finance and budget? So it really gets into, into the, some of the nitty-gritty. So once we, once you have all that information, then the board sits down and determines those final qualifications to put in the position announcement. And I'll show you a couple of examples of those in this booklet in a moment. And that position announcement is what we publicize nationwide and at that same time the application online is opened up. So applications are received for that four-week time period, at which point approximately two weeks after there, we then come back to talk to you about the candidates. And then you'll see that it varies dramatically in terms of the interview timeframe because at that point, it comes down to scheduling. And, you know, as, as you know, that, that can be challenging. And so from day one, we recommend looking out and starting to identify dates and times that are convenient for the board and already get those on, you know, on your, on your calendars. One, one important thing to note is that when you do conduct the surveys, you are not required to announce a specific time or location or date of the interviews. You do have to provide a 15-day window and make an announcement at a public meeting of the 15-day window that they'll be taking place. So it might be, you know, and we have the specific language that we'll provide you and it's also in the search manual, but for the purposes of the superintendent's search, according to blah, 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 the school board will be conducting interviews from June 1 through June 15. And then you keep announcing 15-day windows until the entire interview process is completed. But that, that timeframe does vary quite a bit based on, on the board, the candidates. Very often it stretches out if you have a particularly strong pool of candidates because it's even harder to make, make that final decision. And then when, in the end, the contract negotiations, it's not done until it's done. And so that's where we always caution folks to, you know, it's, it's, it's not finished until signatures are, are on, on the line on the bottom. So that's a, a sample timeline that I did want to, did want to point out to you. Does anybody have any questions before we review the manual? Yes, sir?
In the preparation of interview instruments, is one of the instruments, a interview between the final three or four candidates and the community?
No, we, because of the confidentiality, we do not recommend, and through the, the VSBA search process, we don't include a, any sort of community interview forum like that. We found that what that often has done is it will limit the, because if that is something that a board decides to do, that is something that would have to be put out front from the very beginning. So that way the candidates who are applying know that there is a likelihood that their information and their name will be put out in front of the, of the entire community. And we've seen that happen in, in other cities and other states as well. And we've seen that happen in other cities and other states as well, where candidates have withdrawn. It unfortunately can turn into a popularity contest. And when the new person, when the person you select is announced, unfortunately, it often turns into discussions about who is not selected versus who was selected and why were they not selected. Where we really want the, when the announcement is made, you want that focus to be entirely about that individual. With that being said, stakeholder involvement and feedback is extremely important. And that's why we do recommend encouraging by any means possible stakeholder involvement in the surveys, the community forums, because that's going to drive, that should drive your position announcement and drive the types of interview questions that you're asking. Because if you know your community is saying, we want somebody who is good at this, then, you know, better be asking those questions to make sure that that is somebody who can fulfill that for the community. So I think that, you know, hopefully that answers the question.
But that's not always the standard, right? Because I, a couple of weeks ago, I think I read in one of your news bulletins, accounting in Virginia, I don't think they're using V S B A, but they announced their final three candidates.
Right.
And that became very public. So that is done sometimes, I guess?
Rarely. But the vast majority, you know, we conduct the vast majority of the searches in Virginia and it's not a component of the search that we do. And we do, you know, candidates value that confidentiality. And they've grown to trust the V S B A, they know, and should you work with us on the search, you're going to get tired of hearing the word confidentiality, confidentiality, confidentiality. It's just, it's so important because that's what's going to allow you to attract an excellent pool of candidates.
So when they apply, is there something in the thing that says whether they're confident, whether we will announce like final three publicly or not? Is that what friends give it to them?
Not typically, because it's not part of the process. It's more on the, kind of, it's kind of like one of those opt-out, opt-in type things. We typically will recommend, you know, that is something that if it's going to happen on the front end, that's what they announce from the beginning, but...
Okay, well, this would be my third search.
Yes, ma'am.
So knowing the community and what they want is to be more involved at that, at the back end of this, where candidates actually have come in, gone around to the schools, our finalists, you know, met with senior staff, met with community organizations, you know, representatives, and then surveys again have been taken to give us more feedback as to what the community feels about those candidates. So I'm just going to tell you, they're going to want to be involved at the end.
Yeah.
And have that interaction.
I definitely see the value of both ways. That is going to definitely be a hard decision for us to make. That's definitely one of the, I wrote it down as something for us to definitely consider when we're making our decision because it is definitely going to be a touchy subject.
Sure. All right, now what I'd like to do is just briefly take you through the search manual. I won't read all 75 pages to you, but I did just want to highlight a few things in there. First of all, it again provides you some of that background information about the association, lists in more detail, the searches that we've completed since 2009, that's on page eight. And you can see it's quite a sizable list. We completed approximately 15 searches last year, have 10 so far this year. So that's 25 out of the 130-something divisions here in Virginia. So that's a pretty large percentage. But then it talks a little bit about some legal things to be aware of, qualifications of division superintendents. One of the things that you do want to know is that in order to be a superintendent in Virginia, you have to be listed on the superintendent's eligibility list with the Virginia Department of Education. And so that is something that we check with our references as applicants come in. So when we have that second meeting with you, we can say to you, yes, this person meets these qualifications, they're not yet on the Department of Education list, but they have submitted their information if they have or if they have not. This is more important with out-of-state applicants. You may have a sitting superintendent, say from North Carolina, who is looking to move to Virginia, has submitted his or her information and it just has not been processed yet. But we do monitor that very closely as we go through. Page 14, we do include some information from the Board of Education. That talks a little bit about the 180 days to, after the vacancy occurs. You know, as you mentioned, you all are well ahead of that and we'll have this hopefully wrapped up prior to that October 1st date. There are a couple of documents that we do provide with you. One is a certificate of appointment and the other is the oath of the superintendent and those are on page 17 and 18. And once you do have your new superintendent, they do have to take the oath and complete, you have to complete the certificate and submit that to the Department of Education so they have that. Then has detailed information about the search process, but I think some of the value that I'd like to show to you, well, actually, one thing before I get there, is if you go to page 30, 30 and 31 is a paper example of the survey that would be conducted. So these are the questions that are asked electronically and also on the paper survey that we'll provide to you. And you'll see that it has a series of questions addressing that required, preferred, not-important component. And it addresses things like doctorate, experience, teaching experience, work experience in Virginia. And then it goes into more, kind of, different priorities and different characteristics of the individual, such as their leadership and management style, their personal characteristics, what type of relationship with the board, staff relations, community relations, school finance. And this is very helpful because you'll often find that there are common themes that will come through. And it's very beneficial because as a board, you may have some idea of the feelings of your stakeholders, of your community, but this really can help dramatically with that. And very often, it's reinforced by the community forums. We do recommend the community forums as well as the survey because you will have folks who don't want to tell you in person and they would like to complete a survey. And then you have folks who the only way they'll want to tell you is in person, what they're looking for in the next superintendent. And there is a open-ended, two open-ended questions on the bottom that we do provide you with all of those written responses as well, and those are often very helpful. Starting on page 33, there are some example position announcements. And that's where you can see just some samples where we talk a little bit about the county, the school division, and then qualifications. And the qualifications vary. And if you looked at, if you actually go to the V S B A website right now under our superintendent searches and you can see the list of all of them, and if you pull up all of the qualifications or the position announcements for each of those searches, you're going to find very different lists because it does vary dramatically from community to community. But we do provide you with those so you have something to work from and have some idea of what the end announcement is going to look like. Starting on page 38, it's a little challenging taking an online application and putting it into a format that's easy to look at in a binder. But this basically talks, you know, talks about AppleTrack, the gather, the information that we gather. So it talks, you know, obviously their employment, their experience, their education, their licensure, statement pages, like what they believe the personal characteristics are that make an effective superintendent, language proficiencies, references, any supplemental materials that they may want to add. We also have some questions on there that allows them to answer specifically to you. So, you know, we'll ask questions like, why do you think that you are the best choice for this particular school division? And the hope is that they'll take the time and learn about the community, learn about the division, look at what you all are doing, look at their experiences, and merge that together and put that information in there for you. So that's always a good way to find out about their level of engagement and the type of research and background that they're doing. Because just like we are doing those reference checks on them, they also, the best ones are doing the background and checks on the community and the school district so they can learn about where they're potentially coming to work. We also talk, we have our standard legal information, has their licensure ever been suspended and whatnot. There are then steps on, starting on page 42 with AppleTrack, that's something that I would provide you independently along with your username and password on how you could access the candidate information. Then starting on page 45 are the sample interview questions. And as I mentioned, we have them broken down by category, so community involvement, employee relations, experience, facilities, finance. Very often, board members will have pressing questions. It might be a particular thing that's of interest to you. It could be finance, it could be facilities, it could be technology. And so it's very important when gathering that first, the set of questions for the first round of interviews, typically a board of this size will probably have two questions apiece in addition to kind of the start and end, why do you want to be here and whatnot. But it's very, you may find that after submitting them all, to consider that each of you is asking something, a question about the same category. Well, we don't want seven questions on technology. So that's why we like to provide these in different categories. So it gives you a nice, well-rounded view on the candidates. Starting on page 50 are some of the interview organizers that I've talked about. And we give you a variety because it's a matter of personal preference and style and what you like. And so we have some of them that have rating systems, we have some of them that have narratives. I particularly like the one on page 54, and I think this is a great one when you're, after your first interview, because there's an area there that says, questions you might like answered about this candidate in the future. Because inevitably, after that candidate walks out the door, you're going to say, you know, I wish we had asked more about this, or I want to ask about this. And it's really important to get it down here so that way, if they happen to be one of those folks that you bring back for a second round, you can look at it and say, that's right, we wanted to make sure that we got into that with more detail for them. And then, starting on page 58, there's some sample correspondence. You know, if you do have internal candidates who are on the superintendent's eligibility list, invitations there. Should you get inquiries to the board, we have, candidates should not be contacting you directly. The all questions should go through the Virginia School Boards Association, either to me or Gina Patterson. We are the only two that conduct the searches and we're the two that they would talk to about that. So if you had any candidates contacting you, it's a boilerplate message that you can say, thank you very much for your email, for your call, please contact so-and-so at the Virginia School Boards Association. We then do have regrets letters and whatnot that are used later on in the process, but we'll talk, we would talk to you more in more detail about that later on. At the end of the, at the end of the packet, starting on page 66, from there on is the sample superintendent contract. And that's where, and we would provide this to you all in a more user-friendly document other than in this booklet. But it really has, it's a very well-rounded piece based on years of experience from other school divisions and school boards, because what you don't want to do is obligate a future board, if you're not on that, on the board any longer, to something that is legally difficult to deal with, such as transferring a sick leave and days off and things like that. So there's a lot of good information there. And again, Elizabeth Ewing, our Director of Legal and Policy Services, would be happy to guide you through that process and review any of them with you. One of the things I really just want to want to close with is, first of all, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to explain the process to you. I can tell you it's a, it's a challenging process because of the pressure of the decision. You know, the school board hires and fires one individual and it's that superintendent. And you all have an interest in your community and the success of your community, otherwise you wouldn't be serving on your school board. And so you understand the importance of that decision. And I would just let you know that this process is, can be emotionally draining one and it's very important to maintain those open lines of communications and trust with one another because especially when you're getting into those interviews and you're spending even more time together as a board and you're talking about candidates and trying to find the person that's the best fit for the community, it can be taxing. And I always like to caution folks about that, not to underestimate it. And I'm sure having gone through several, you can attest to the taxing nature of that. I also would just like to say, you know, we are your association, so we do have a vested interest in your success and finding the best fit. Whether or not you utilize us for the superintendent search, we are still your association and we want you to find the best fit and we're going to continue to provide the best services that we can to you as our member board.
Peter, I noticed you kind of passed by page nine. Were you going to get back to that?
Which one, in this one or this one?
The one with dollars on it.
Oh, sure, we can talk dollars, absolutely. Dollars and cents, right? All right, so you can see the fee structure, and that's also on the staple document, that's on the last page there as well. So that is something that you all will have and you can keep that with you. You can see we have the, our fee structure is based on enrollment size. So with an enrollment of 5,000 to 14,999, the superintendent search fee is $10,500. And then there are, we provide some estimated expenses, so the advertising for Education Week, travel costs and whatnot, but we just bill the actual expenses for those. I can tell you, in-house expenses, one of the things that's unknown is, in most cases, the boards decide to pay for the travel expenses for the candidates that are coming in to be interviewed. Those expenses can vary dramatically. If you have folks that are in driving distance and don't need an overnight stay, that's one thing. If they're a little bit further, need an overnight stay, that's another. If they're coming out from California, that gives you a whole other thing. So that's just something to be aware of. That is, it is very dependent and it's hard to put a number on that. But in terms of the actual cost to you all from us, those are all listed, listed right there, along with the total to V S B A maximum, the estimate on the bottom provides you with the, kind of the combination of that.
What do you feel about the in-house expenses with, I guess you call it clerical help here, but other help that you need from our staff beyond board members? What is that going to be like for us?
Yeah, good question. So very, typically where that's coming into play is the organizing, and this isn't really clerical, but just be aware, the organizing of, say, the community forums, you would want, the time that it'll take to set those up like you would any other event that the community can come and provide you with feedback. That was, that's really more references, when it was more of a post office box mailing the information, there usually was somebody designated by the board. If it was not the board chair, often it was the clerk that would collect the information, put those in a locker, and that took time. So there's far less time. Some boards were, you know, they would have the clerks go around and collect the paper surveys, so that's a little bit of time. And then that's why we input all of the surveys for you all. So there's, what we have found honestly is the easiest way to do that is just to have somebody scan the surveys as a PDF as they come in and just, because if you get a stack of them, run them on the scanner and then send them to us. So there's a little bit of time there. But there's actually far...
What about scheduling, like the interviews and stuff? Do you do all that?
No, so the interview schedule, so when it gets to the interview scheduling, that would be typically, it's going to be either the board chair or a designee of the board to do that. Because we want to make sure that the contact, we don't want a staff member having contact with somebody who's potentially going to be their future superintendent. So we really want the contact from the start to be with the board to establish that rapport and relationship. Because to be frank, you can learn a lot about people when trying to coordinate schedules and get them set up to come to meet with you all. And you can learn a lot about personality traits and expectations.
Well, that's one, one more question, sorry. You mentioned how you, your staff does the reference checking. Do we at any point, like when we get down to the final seven or three, are we ever having conversations with those references too?
In most cases, the boards do not. We do very thorough vetting. You know, when we're looking at the individuals, we really want to make sure there are no surprises for the board. And so that's what we're looking for. And that's where, especially with out-of-state folks, that the national affiliation can really give us some excellent input on the candidates. So most cases, no, they're not doing any sort of follow-up information. And in that second meeting, I think you would find that our references are very thorough.
Okay.
So...
Joe, did you have a question?
No, he took care of it. Thank you, Peter.
Sure. Jamie, Penny, do you guys have questions?
Good.
No?
Pretty much been answered.
Very good.
I want to be on a school board that has like your first category, zero students or maybe five. Five would be a nice round number. I can, I think that'd be comfortable.
We did the search for the smallest, so it was Highland County.
Oh, wow. How many students?
Yeah, a couple hundred.
Wow.
So, yeah. All right.
Any other things, board members?
No, thank you very much.
Just as a...
Thank you, Peter.
Oh, absolutely.
Appreciate it. We'll be getting back in touch with you.
Oh, yeah.
We have to give these back.
I just want to state, having... I just want to state, having followed you as you do the newsletter and are you moving, you have a lot of irons in the fire, lots of them. And I hope that they don't conflict with each other when... Good, you must be, yeah.
Thank you.
Tell Gina we missed her.
All right, board members, just real quick, two things. Obviously, you see the meeting's coming up there. I just want to, Brenda, you can probably answer this as well. Do we have all graduations covered by a board member? Okay, just want to make sure. I know, Penny, you said you're not able to go to any, or you are?
Not.
You're not. So we have someone going to Christiansburg, Blacksburg. Blacksburg, okay. I'm going to Eastmont and Auburn, so I just want to make sure we were covered on that. Other thing is, the sheet I laid down in front of you or just the notes that I took when I did all my school visits over the past month or so, just wanted you guys to see kind of the feedback that I was getting from the principals there. So with that said, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned.